I call to order the Monroe Public School Board of Education meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 8th, 2024. The time is 7:00 PM. Jamie, could we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Heck.
Here.
Mrs. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Here.
Mrs. Williams. Mr. Zimmerman.
Here. Could we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a reminder, if you would like to address the board, all of the papers are sitting back on that back counter. And then if you can give them to our board secretary, Jamie, then you can address the board. Superintendent Shaw, are there any additions or deletions to the agenda this evening?
There are none, sir.
All right. Could I get a motion?
I will move to approve the agenda as a reminder.
Second.
Can we have roll call, please, Jamie?
Yes, Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova. Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mr. Zimmerman.
Yes, and the motion passes. That takes us to superintendent's comments. I'll turn it over to Superintendent Shaw.
Thank you very much. All right, well, good evening, everybody, and welcome. I want to, I've just got one comment tonight, and I did this in our prior workshop, and I want to bring it back out right here, is first and foremost, I was able to have a conversation with a community member today, and so I want to bring clarity from last night. So we had on there about Waterloo update, and we were thinking that would be talking about the bond. And I apologize because we should have brought more clarity to that, but four weeks ago, we were asked to present a plan as far as what Waterloo would be. And so we tried to present that plan last night overarching of what Waterloo would potentially could be. And I say potentially because as was promised last spring to the Waterloo staff and to the parents, that unless this board took any further action, the board, Waterloo would come back as a K-6 building. We also stated at that time, though, we would be having conversations with the community, with the staff, and others about Waterloo in general, though, too, if it should come back as a K-6 building or not. But again, no action would be taken unless by the board from those meetings. And so that was to be done this fall, which is now that time period. And so last night, we tried to share that, wanted to share that information, and it got muddied up, and I apologize for that. We had the ISD here to also, though, address a point about leasing of classroom spaces in regards to GSRP. Because GSRP is an integral part of all that we do here at Monroe Public Schools and around our county. And so that was all a part of that. At no time have I had any conversations, and bringing this very clearly stated here, with the ISD about Monroe Public Schools selling Waterloo to them. That was a rumor that started this past summer and has been perpetuated since. So that conversation has not and never has happened, and I'm sorry that people feel that they needed to make that. Just like the rumor of Waterloo becoming a sixth grade. Nobody's had any conversations around Waterloo becoming a sixth grade. Waterloo, in all intents and purposes, at this very moment, unless this board of education takes any different action, is a kindergarten through sixth grade building. Can't say anymore. The board of education tonight, the recommendation in front of them by this administration is to approve the bond work at Waterloo as was planned from the 2020 vote, and has been planned right along with all the projects and all the phases of our bond. So that concludes my comments for this first time.
Okay. Public commentary on board agenda items only. Val, do we have any?
Yes, we have one. Yvonne, did you want to talk now or after?
We can wait.
Okay, because it kind of fits yes and no. Okay, so we have none at this time.
All right. Let's see. Next on our agenda is board discussion and actionary items and reports.
I have one, and it was related to there were three registered behavioral technicians that resigned, all from Custer, and they all had the same resignation date. Do we have input into?
What is the question?
So in our, in our reports is there were three registered behavioral technicians at Custer, and they all three resigned, and the date listed all had the same date as October 4th.
So I can't speak to the date of their resignations. I do know those people have secured employment with other organizations. In terms of the specificity around the date, I don't have a response to that.
So it was just a coincidence. There wasn't like, I mean, three in the same school. That just seemed to me like maybe there was, yeah, I don't know.
I do know they have secured a job with another organization.
Noted.
It's all.
Noted. Thank you. That was all I had.
Next is our consent agenda items. Are there any items that a board member would like to move off consent agenda and move to, over to new business?
I would like to remove B-2A approval of minutes. And do you want me to make the whole motion, then?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move to remove B-2A approval of minutes from the consent agenda and approve B-2B and B-26 to be considered the consent agenda. I'm taking off A. I'm, the motion is B and C. Am I missing something?
I thought you said six.
Oh. Sorry. Yeah.
Okay, is there support? Jamie, could we have roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Yes. And the motion passes. Mrs. Flynn, do we have new hires tonight?
We do not.
We do not?
We do not.
All right. So that brings us to?
You'd like that.
New business, then. Yes. So that brings us to approval of minutes.
Okay, so I've been digging through our minutes recently, and when I looked at the minute approval, and you look at the document, so you go into our page, and you can choose agenda, which would have been the agenda, and the minutes. So the minutes are what we keep. Those are the record of what goes on here. So we have two ways of doing that, and y'all can correct me if I misspeaking here. We have what was written as to, that was written up, and we also have either audio or video. So those two together makes our minutes, right? But when you go into minutes, the only thing that's there is the written record. So I always thought there was a link on those records that include the audio and stuff, but I went, I kept going back and looking. So do our minutes include? What we're approving right now appears to only be the paper. So where is the, there's a reference to the, to the video and audio, but it's not anywhere near there. Because I wanted to go back and listen, and I couldn't find it. I had to go back a different way to get it. So go to agenda, I mean, go to meeting minutes.
If I may, just to under.
Then go to minutes.
So the way I've understood it was the written minutes is what is signed. The written minutes are what is signed. That is what is required of us according to board policy to keep the written record of minutes, and I believe state as well. We provide the audio and video as well on our page, but the audio and video do not have to be approved. That's the way I understood it.
We had a big conversation about this a while back, and the audio, keeping of the audio minutes, we said was important because in the written record, it doesn't say anything about what the board does except for we discuss and go on it. So on the minutes that we're approving, we literally have no record if we don't include the audio of what went on because the minutes don't include anything anymore. Have you went back and read them lately? It's on the website.
So where is the link located for the audio and video?
The audio and video is located on the link when you go to agenda. Yes, it is there, but that is not the record that we're approving of minutes. And so when I went back and looked, I'm like, gosh, we're not approving, we're not actually approving a record because you would think we all never say anything or do anything. Because there's.
But on our website, they are right there.
No. When you pull up these minutes.
They're here.
Andy, when you pull up our record that says minutes, right? This is what we're approving is minutes.
So you want to.
On there, it only says that, we can pull it up and read it, it's to be in here. It says that we just discussed, the board was able to answer questions and discuss things. And I was always okay with that because I thought there was an audio inclusion. Because on our minutes, it says there is where it would be, but there's no links. There's no nothing in those minutes.
The minutes.
So what, what are we approving? That two-piece document that says the board just asked questions and whatnot, that the record that we keep forever? And if that's the case, then we have no idea what transpired.
Okay. Let me, go ahead.
Yes. Can you please pull up our website onto the screen? One moment, it'll be right there.
Yes. So now if we go ahead and click on the board minutes up at the top.
No, go under board of education and click the first one. Yeah, there you are.
So as we look right here, slide it over. So here's our agenda, here's our minutes, and we supplied, and we've been since we had that meeting, we talked about using the minutes and having it detailed in here, like the timestamp, timing right there. So here's the audio recording to that meeting and the video recording.
I agree a thousand percent that that's where it is. When we are approving right now the minutes.
Right.
That goes into the record. There is no inclusion of an audio. It's only, that's not, so my question is, we are including that in these minutes that we approve?
Right, that, so would it help if this, I don't know, can it sit right here? Is that what you're asking?
No. What I'm asking, when we are approving these minutes right now, are we approving the language on the paper? Because there is no audio included on the minutes that we are submitting to the record. Yeah, it's on the website, but on the minutes that we are approving, there is no audio. So if, say, five years from now, someone comes back and says, hey, I want to see the minutes, and I went looking for minutes, that's how this came up in my thoughts, and you go back and look, and you used to have a record, and in the minutes on the written paper, it would literally almost verbiage of what everybody said. It'd be pages and pages and pages and pages. So we switched and said, okay, we're going to do the audio version and then leave the minimal in the paper. So if I go back, someone comes back five years from now and says, hey, I want to see the record, what are they going to get? The minutes that we're approving?
So.
We should have a link. We had this discussion quite a while, ways back, and Jamie said that if you go to her, she can get you whatever audio you want to see.
I understand that. I'm asking about the minutes that we are approving. What are we approving?
Approving all of it.
So did I.
It has a bulk.
But where's it at?
And I think maybe what Jamie should do is just put the audio there.
There has to be something that references, because I want to go back and do this stuff and.
We can add a link, but when it comes down to, when we had that discussion a year ago, we had said, and we even talked to Mr. Payne about storage and be able to keep it all. So that's why it sits right there for September 24th meeting.
Okay.
Audio and video is supplied.
So my question is, when we are making a motion to approve all of our minutes, is it the written record along with the audio?
Absolutely.
Yes.
So I, I would hope that in our, in our thing, that's somewhere listed where you can get the audio.
Yeah, and I think.
I'm thinking, Larry, I'm thinking five, six years from now. Because if I go back and pull you guys' records up from years ago, like, I can read what you all said. And I get it, we didn't want to do, that we're going to read what everybody said, so we said there's going to be an audio. Remember that?
So what we can do is.
Thank you.
We can supply the link on there, but we'll also, at the very top, it says if the link is not, is dead, to contact the central office to get it because links do die.
So you're saying that this page on the webpage is our record of meeting minutes? And that's what we're approving?
Our record is assigned minutes that Mary does as board secretary, which is the paper. And then we have committed to make sure to keep this page always current. And so if you go back to when it was, we started talking about the audio and video, we scrolled all the way down, you would see that those audio and video minutes are there. But we can make the link onto this document that says here is your audio link.
Well, I think if. I think if we're going to approve minutes for, for what, seven, how many years you got to have these? I think there needs to be an easy way to get the audio link directly off those meeting minutes, and it, it should be very.
It's right next to them. It's the September 24th.
Andy. Andy, that's, are we, so I would like to make a motion, that we're going to approve the whole webpage. Is that? I mean, are we approving the whole webpage, then?
Just put the link in the body of the message.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you.
And, and the paper minutes.
Yes.
Put the link. Yeah.
Somehow the audio and the paper have to be linked and saved. So how long do you save these on the webpage?
Due to our retention, everything's saved on the server here. It's redundant at the high school and then in Grand Rapids.
I mean, on the webpage, right here.
It, it doesn't matter. Even if it was deleted today, it's backed up every evening.
I understand that it's backed up, but for me to go back and do, and look back.
How far can you go back on the webpage?
Thank you. Thank you.
If I.
Oh, no, I wanted to go back years.
Years. Yeah, you, you can go years.
Yeah, but if you go years, it doesn't audio because for years, when they did their minutes, they were pages and pages and pages of documented conversations. You all remember those days.
Right.
That wasn't that long ago.
If I may add, the retention policy for board of education minutes is perpetual.
Yes, I understand that.
There's no expiration. I can tell you, I have a whole vault of all these bound cursive pages from the 1800s. So it doesn't ever, it, we can never dispose of them. Even if we were dissolve, dissolved as a school district, we would have to submit all those records to the state to retain. There is no disposition date, so we have to retain the minutes, whether that be audio or the, the paper.
Right.
So even if it's not displayed on the webpage, if there's someone that would like to review the minutes, that's a request that can be made through the superintendent's office, and we would have to provide those documents.
What was nice in the past, that when I want to go back and look at the minutes from meetings you guys had before I came here, all I have to do is go open the meeting minutes and read it. Now you have, you can't go to your meeting minutes, you got to go to your meeting minutes, and then you have to go out here and go scroll down. I mean, it's like, it's not there forever, sorry, it's not. It's maybe somewhere else forever. So my question is, what meeting?
We got to bring clarity to that statement.
Andy, he said it's on his server.
But this, since we started keeping these here.
All the way back to April 2017.
Okay.
The audio and video that, when we came to that agreement on the way we kept our minutes, time stamped right there, we can add it there. But if you go back to that meeting, when we made that decision, they are on this page.
So is there any way, because when I read this document, it says the board, every single one says the board of education had a chance to ask questions and hold discussion on every single one. So people then have to go find a way to go get that. And my suggestion is, if we could just keep that all in one spot, I think it would be beneficial because the links on your, on your page doesn't send you there on, on that weekend review. You can't click on there, and you can't click on there and get a link to go to the audio.
I appreciate that. I appreciate, now you've provided more clarity on that. You're correct. If you go to the, we can review it, it's just going to bring you straight to either the minutes and/or to the agenda.
Right.
Not to this page right here.
Right, and, and.
I appreciate that clarity.
A click, so when I am approving minutes going forward, and it only came up because I went hunting, are we approving the written as saying, only thing the board did was act, discuss, and do what? There's no anything that the board did, and everything must be referred to the audio. Is that what we're doing, continuing? And that audio will be separate on the webpage?
I would say we're approving it all as one big chunk.
Yeah, because it's all our minutes.
I would think that if those links. I thought that those, those blue links, like, why aren't there blue links in those minutes? Meeting minutes. There's no blue links in the meeting minutes on there. It's on the agenda, but not in the meeting minutes. You can pull it up. Who's on it right now? Pull up the meeting minutes from something that's completed.
How about September 24th?
Yeah, go ahead. No, the meeting minutes, not the agenda, the minutes. The minutes box right there. Just click it. There you go. And so, yeah.
So I see what you're saying. We'll put a link.
So there's no links there.
But again, go back one page, and on that whole line for September 24th, you have your audio, your video, your agenda, and your minutes.
I'm just thinking of making it easy to nice and convenient people.
But we'll put it there so it's in both ways. So, but back to.
I understand that. When, when you see that box minutes, that's the minutes that we're voting on. And in those minutes, there is no link to any audio.
Well.
Does that make sense?
No.
Thank you.
I think that it was understood that we were approving all of it together.
I thought so, I thought so too, till I started going back and looking at the changes, and I'm like, oh, I think this is starting to become a little bit discombobulated. And if my thing is that we can get it all back together, so in the minutes, there's a link to go to audio directly, I think that would be beneficial and helpful to anybody involved.
We'll have that link there.
Including in your weekend review.
So the weekend review would be, again, because it pops up the minutes, it'll just be the link on the minutes.
Yeah, you just need a link. Because when you open them right now, there is no link. And maybe it would helpful people to see it and read it.
When you see the, the minutes in the future, and there will be embedded a link for audio, video, or for audio.
And when we approve the minutes, it's including audio.
Why wouldn't you include the video? Might as well include it all. Maybe a picture of a person.
Okay. But the board, the board meetings are only video, just so you know, right? They're audio, too.
And just the audio is because that's what's documented. When you go through the minutes, the time is about the audio.
And I would just caution that.
Then just do that.
If, if you, if the hierarchy is at the top, and you decide to switch to a different website, the amount of storage, it's going to necessitate those large videos. We may have to change, the video goes to this server, the links are here, we change our hosting. When you start embedding those links, you may have to go back if we change a location and update all those minutes. That's the only reason, I'm assuming the reason you did it that way because it went to the root page.
Yeah.
So there's a logic to it. And we can explain that.
But we're, we're approving minutes, and I want to make sure that the minutes I'm approving is not saying the board just discuss things and ask questions.
We're just.
Because it makes us look like we're a non-functioning board that does any, nothing.
I would, all's I'm saying is you might want to put on this shelf the video and on this shelf the audio.
However you guys do it, just make it easy so that we know when we're approving minutes, they're in one spot, and that's what we're approving, and includes the audio and the written record.
If, if we could have time to work with Jamie and Mr. Shaw, then we can come up with a recommendation that would be efficient.
Yeah, it was just difficult to go searching, too.
Yep, we'll figure that out.
That was all. So I will move to approve B-2A approval of minutes.
For.
Part of the consent agenda.
Any discussion? Hearing none? Give us the vote, please, Jamie.
Yes, Mrs. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Heck.
Yes.
Mrs. Myers.
Yes.
Mr. Van Wachanova.
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passed. That brings us to board policy and board clarification. I'm going to turn it over to our board attorney, Mr. Chisholm.
Thank you, President Zimmerman. I have a copy of a letter for the board that I'd be happy to distribute and then provide some verbal context as well. There's your official copy for the record. Thank you for the invitation, President. I'm sorry, I didn't bump you there.
No, you're good.
Thank you for the invitation, President Zimmerman. So the question that was asked of me is whether the board, as of today, has an effective purchasing policy. Apparently, there was a question raised at the last meeting, I was not here, about the impact of a vote to amend that policy, and the vote did not pass. Usually, you may have heard me comment before that I'm hesitant to offer a legal opinion in public because I try to offer that in confidence to the board. But after reviewing the question that you asked me, President Zimmerman, I don't have to give you a legal opinion. I was able to simply review your policies and put it together in order. And so I would review that for you now, and I don't have any problem reading that aloud to the public because this isn't, it's not necessarily a legal opinion, strictly speaking, it's just putting together your policies in the correct order. So I'll start, I'll start below my introductory paragraph, just in the interest of time. Official actions of the board are recorded and published in the board's minutes, and then I quote policy 0143. I've included all of these for your reference as well. Individual members of the board do not possess the powers that reside in the board of education. The board speaks through its minutes and not through its individual members. The important part of that sentence for our purposes is that the board speaks through its minutes. And that's policy again 143. So then we turn to the next policy defining how we keep minutes. The minutes, as the official record of board action, are kept in accordance with board policy, and then I quote policy 168.1. The secretary or temporary secretary appointed by the presiding officer shall designate a person to keep minutes at each meeting showing the date, time, place, members present, members absent, any decisions made at a meeting open to the public and the purpose or purposes for which a closed session is called. These minutes must be approved by the board and endorsed by the secretary at the next meeting. The minutes shall include all roll call votes taken at the meeting. So we have just following sequence of board policies here. The board speaks through its minutes, and you do have a process for formally recording what those minutes are. So I'm on page two now. On June 25th, 2019, a little over five years ago now, the board adopted policy 6320, captioned "purchasing", and the policy has remained in effect without any recorded revision since that time. We did check the minutes. The minutes of that board meeting is posted on the website that we just had on the website a second ago, or on the screen a second ago, reflect the following. Motion made by Mrs. Taylor, supported by Mr. Bunkelman, to approve policy 6320, purchasing as written, effective June 25th, 2019. Discussion indicated was Mr. Van Wachanova asked if the services was removed from this policy, and the vote was a, the, the motion passed by a 7-0 roll call vote. That's also included, the copy of those minutes included for your reference. So we have the minutes record board action. You have a mechanism for actually keeping minutes, which you do, and the minutes that are available are record that this policy was adopted, approved on, again, June 25th, 2019. This is all, again, answering the question, do you have a policy in effect today, or do you not? So policy 6320, as maintained on the website, reflects this date of adoption, it's stamped on your, your copy of your policy manual, and reflects no subsequent revision or modification. That's also included, included as an enclosure. The minutes of your 16th regular meeting of this year, so the meeting on September 24th, 2024, also posted on the district's website, and the one that you just approved, reflect the following. So when I wrote this opinion, they were proposed minutes, now they're approved minutes. Motion by Mr. Van Wachanova, support by Mr. Heck, to approve the following policy effective September 24th, 2024, as presented. Policy 6320, purchasing. The vote, the motion failed on a 2-5 roll call vote. Dr. Behrens, Mrs. Williams, Mrs. Vincent, Mr. Heck, and Mr. Zimmerman voted no. Also included as an enclosure. So that's the most recent minutes, recording board action. So the no board action was taken at that time, and the motion was to adopt the proposal, and that motion failed. The draft policy referenced as presented in the above motion was included in the agenda for the meeting as item B3D and was proposed as a technical correction by Niola and was captioned as a technical, I quote, "technical correction policy, volume 38, number two." Technical correction proposed by Niola included, quote unquote, "a cross-reference to policy 6350, prevailing wage, with the intent of encouraging districts to review all related content during impl- with the intent of encouraging districts to review all related content during implementation. Also includes miscellaneous grammar punctuation corrections." The draft policy revision also included a note, quote, "At board member request, this is a revision to policy update recommended by Neola. In Paragraph 1, Paragraph 4, and in Item B under Paragraph 4, the word "services" was added", unquote. And then the next relevant board policy, again, doesn't require an opinion from me, but just putting these all together. Policy 0131.1 governs the adoption of bylaws and policies by the board, and reads in its entirety as follows. I will not read this all aloud. The key portion that I bolded for the board's reference here, for your attention, is that there's four types of action that the board has said you can take regarding a policy. You can adopt a policy, you can amend a policy, you can repeal a policy, and you can suspend a policy. That's the, the key idea of Policy 131.1, is those are the four types of actions the board can take. So, quick recap from a minute ago. The board did adopt this policy, 6320, June 25th, 2019. The question then is, have you repealed that policy, amended that policy, or suspended that policy? And the short answer, I'm not going to keep reading aloud the whole letter at this point, but the short answer is that there's no record in your minutes that there has been a motion either proposed or voted on to repeal or suspend this policy. And so because no amendment was made, because there's been no motion to repeal the policy, because there's been no motion to suspend the policy, the policy was adopted, and therefore it's, it's still adopted. It's just there. Thank you.
Can we refer to the first reading of the policy? Because prior to that meeting, we had a first reading of the policy, and during that meeting, the rules were essentially suspended in order to take a vote on that. And I will refer to, in our board brief, it said, "As a reminder, the Board of Education will approve each policy separately as a first reading through formal voting action." And it was discussed, and that it would be consistent. We had never voted on a first round policy before. I even went back and randomly was checking to see if it had been done, and I couldn't find anything that was ever voted on. So when this policy was put up as a first reading, there were two options put up. And the option that passed, passed by a seven to nothing vote, and that was to include the board members' recommendations of closing services.
I don't think that passed at a seven oh.
It did, because I, I've got the notes here. It really was a seven oh vote. There was no, in fact, there wasn't even any discussion. No, it was seven oh. And there was no discussion at the time. It was pretty much, and everybody moved on. And so there was a motion to adopt a policy. That policy was adopted with that language in there, and that is a board, according to this, a formal action, a voting action of the board. What happened after that is the second reading came up, and during the second reading, there were four policies, I think, put up, I re-ah my brain. And that was the only, the rest of them followed course. When the second reading came up, we approved it because it had already been approved. That was pretty standard of how we operated. But for that one policy, it was put up for another vote. And so the question becomes, it was already voted on, the word "services" was included in there, it was a seven to oh vote, and that's a vote of the board. And then why, how can it go to another vote and get declined? And then say, well, let's go back to the policy before the last one we approved and put that in place.
By the way, I think that 19 did include service.
It did, yeah. It include, oh, 19, you mean, oh.
It does, it does not, actually. It's, it's, it's date stamped by Neola.
Okay.
Art, because I will vote that when yes, I had services in, and it's a seven zero, you'll see. But go ahead, I'm sorry.
Sure, so, again, and, and I wasn't at the meeting on the 24th, so I'm not.
It's documented in the record.
I'm, I'm not questioning that. The question I was asked was, do we have a purchasing policy? And my answer to that is, you do, because you had a purchasing policy adopted on June 25th, 2019. Adoption is one of the four things the board says it will allow itself to do to a policy. The other three being repeal, amendment, or suspension. And you have not voted on any motion in your, that's reflected in your minutes, to repeal, suspend, or amend the policy that was adopted. And so you have an adopted policy. So that was my answer to that question.
Well, we did. We voted on, we voted on that September 10th. And the policy was voted on out of protocol, and we made us, we used a suspension of rules in order to put a vote up on a first reading. So that policy was voted on, a formal motion was made to adopt the policy as the language was, and so that, it did happen. There is a record of the vote.
There was a record of that first reading vote.
Yes, yes.
There was a vote on the first, on the first reading.
Yes, it was a seven to nothing vote, and the vote was for the policy with the services, yes.
For the first reading.
Yes.
Yes.
That's why the problem came in. And we never had done that before. There was never, it was always approved before work session.
Sure, I was going to say, so I, I feel like I've answered the question that the president asked me. I hope that, if there's any questions.
But it's not, it's the question I have.
Okay.
We're going to get to, we're going to, I think we're going to be able to take this in there.
Okay.
If there's any questions for me on that, I'm happy to answer them, but that's the question I was asked.
So the practice Monroe Public Schools has had is to take no action on the first reading. It's just through a, almost like a consensus, that no, no one say anything. It moves on to a second reading, then the formal vote is taken. In that matter, for that night, because we had four policies that had a lot of deliberation around, should language be put in there on top of what was already being recommended by the, by Neola, that we gave it to you as a board to vote on, and which recommendation you wanted. So that's why it was done that way, because we could not get to a spot where we can make a decision one way or the other. So that's why we said, all right, well, take that first reading and make it so that you pick which one it is. From there, then, the board came to a second reading to make the final decision.
So it, it's never been done that way. It's never operated in that way. And so the fact that we changed the rules to allow for what was being suggested on those first readings, and your notes alone say it's a formal voting action. So if it's a formal voting action, that's what we were told, that this is going to be a formal voting action. So when we voted on the other policies, and those, some of them were four, three votes. And we didn't, nobody relitigated those, nobody put those back up for another vote. Everybody accepted what the votes were, even if you were on the three side of the four.
No, we actually voted on all those in the second ones too.
But nobody relitigated them up for a whole nother vote to turn it down. We followed what was done on the first reading. So if on the first reading, the one was 2414, I think it was a 6-1 vote, I was the only one that voted no. When it came up to the second reading, I accepted the decision of the board and followed protocol with second reading without any community member input to adopt it as policy. So no one, this policy was a seven oh. So again, I, I can't understand how we can go from a seven oh vote to a, let's redo it.
And I think we even pointed out prior to taking the vote on the first, we're deviating here from policy, is our.
Right.
So, and I think that's, that's what's causing the problem.
But we approved that we were going to put that vote up, and what we voted was what was going to be put up at the second reading. There was never a discussion that we're going to do it again.
So I guess my question would be, why do we even have a second reading if we have to go with the vote on the first reading? Because the second reading to me, and this is what happened on September 24th, is that between the time we had the first reading, and it was voted on to move forward, between the time of that meeting and the second reading, many of us did some more research. We talked to some more people. We talked to other board members of other school districts, and how does their policy read? And what do they suggest? And what have they seen as problematic in the past? And instead of putting the blinders on and putting my earplugs in and not listening to that, I listen. And I learn from listening. And if we're saying, we don't want you to learn, and we don't want you to listen, we don't want you to find out more information between that first and second reading, why are we doing it at all?
No, I think, I think you missed the point. I mean, the first reading, basically, is why we put it on two and sometimes we put it on three, is to give the community the chance to come in and, um, sorry. I think there's a community the chance to come on in and express their opinion, whatever, not it is, okay? And then if there's, nobody says anything different, then it goes through. We deviated from the policy. We deviated the policy here, and thoroughly say, hey, we're deviating the policy. You understand that?
Right.
Okay? We all understood that, we took a vote on it, okay? We normally take a vote on the second. We took the vote in the first one.
What did they say?
Making it clear.
One we were going to take.
Making it clear that was going to be the vote. It was a formal voting action. It wasn't a deliberative thing.
Action of the board.
And we even said, this is going to be problematic if we continue to do this on the first vote. And everybody's like, well, that's okay, we'll do it for this time only. Nobody relitigated the other ones. And so.
Instead of having the first vote and the second, we have the second and the first.
You have boards around the state of Michigan who, that is their standard practice, is taking a vote the very first time to show that this, that is their first reading. We had to do it that, this day to move off, so we could actually get to a spot where we had a policy to present. We were at a spot where, as a board, you can decide which policy format you wanted. So we allow, we said, all right, then let's have it so that the board, you seven board members, will determine through your power of your vote, which policy you want to move forward.
We didn't decide that at the work session. That was after the work session, because I went back and looked at the minutes.
Even through the work sessions, we couldn't get to any format of a consensus on what to.
So then the policy doesn't get changed.
Your minutes actually, I, I don't want to oversimplify, but your minutes.
No, no, jump back in.
The minutes answer the question. I mean, so, there's, there's a record of the point of order by Ms. Myers, with support from Mr. Van Wachanova, pointing out that you are suspending the operation of your ordinary rules regarding this specific rule, as allowed by Policy 131.1, that you're suspending it only in this circumstance to allow whether you're going to go with Option A or Option B to go forward as a first reading. It says as a first reading. And then when you go farther down below, on the vote, it says, "Motion by Mr. Van Wachanova, support by Mrs. Myers, to approve as a first reading, Option B of Policy 6320." So that was a first, so you voted on a first reading. So you knew you were going to have a second reading, is my point. Like, this, this wasn't, this wasn't proposed as a final.
But we've never voted twice.
This wasn't proposed as a final vote.
So we, we never have voted twice.
Which policy we were not getting.
We've never voted twice.
No, we never vote twice.
We never vote twice.
And that's why.
We discussed that, you can only have one vote.
Right. Because otherwise, we could have conflicting votes. We could vote.
Right.
Yes, here, no, here, what would that? That's why we vote one time.
Right, and, and we always stand by.
To my understanding, what we voted on that night was which policy were we going to do as a first reading?
That's what your minutes say.
We had, we had two to pick from.
That's what your minutes say.
And we said, we want to pick this one, this, this is the one we're doing as the first reading. So it would be no different as if we didn't vote on it. We just said, which one of these two are we going to vote on? Or did I fall and bang my head on the ceiling?
No, that's what your minutes reflect.
But we've never had a double vote on a policy. We've never voted first or second.
You're getting too far into that.
No, it's true.
We had two options because we couldn't come to a consensus whether we were going to pick strictly what Neola did or what the board had added. So that's when we said, we're going to have to figure out which one of these two we want to bring forward, which is what we did. Then when it came to, so that was just to pick, which one are we doing the first reading, was my understanding.
Your minutes say.
Then we came to our second, when we did the second reading, we were actually voting on that one, and it got voted down.
So prior to that, there was no indication, because if you.
We have a purchasing policy because it didn't pass.
If you go through past practice, when it come to the second reading, it was the adoption of what was already done. So that was the last policy, I believe, that night. So no one said, hey, all these are going up for a re-vote. No one said that. No one said.
We had your second reading.
We've never done a, to double vote.
Because we've never had people want to write policy like we do now.
I think we need to take this out.
What are you talking about? I didn't write that policy.
Everybody wants to add on to the policy.
That's our job. We, we do policy, that's our job.
No, I have Neola that writes policy.
But that's our job. If we want to, if we want to make changes to Neola, we can. I mean.
But why would we? Why would we want to?
Because we want to add services into our, our thing. What's wrong with that? I, I don't understand.
I would say we didn't, because it got voted down to the second reading.
If you go back to the minutes of recording, you'll hear my, my decision.
I, I, I did hear, and I, I, I believe that before the vote goes up, that we make sure we know. I always say it, I need to know why I'm voting. I need to know the reason I'm putting my vote down, and I need to understand that. I say that all the time, and I think we all should do that. I don't ever get a second bite at the apple on any policy I'm, I'm for.
And I thought that was clear. On that first meeting, when we did the first reading, we were voting to push one or the other forward. And then on the second reading, we came to a vote that didn't go any further.
Couldn't we put this on a workshop? I mean, you know, these people want to go home, I mean.
We've done a little workshop. We might as well finish it now and figure it out, instead of kicking the can down the road.
I thought this was going to go to a workshop so we could discuss it, so we can see what policies and how to do it. I literally thought that's what we would do.
So, again, we're back to, would you have a purchasing policy? Clearly stated here.
Well, that's your opinion, but that's.
Well.
No, I got an attorney sitting here that says, we haven't.
But again.
And the result.
He's not here to provide legal advice.
Correct.
I mean, we didn't ask legal advice. He's interpreting policy, which Jeremy is more than qualified to do. But we are also qualified to interpret policy as a board member.
I don't think Josh has legal advice on this.
No, this isn't legal advice. This is policy interpretation is not legal advice. Is it?
I mean, that's a problem.
Policy interpretation is policy interpretation, it's not, well, it's not legal advice. Okay, but he's giving legal advice in public then, and that, a whole different ballgame. I don't think you're giving legal advice, right?
He's not giving legal.
Thank you, you're not giving legal advice. Get that on the record.
But he is the attorney, and he's spelled out exactly why the policy.
It's still intact.
2019 is still.
I, I respect what Jeremy has to say.
But I mean, I just think this is a workshop.
I don't think anybody's disputing Jeremy's interpretation of the policies. I think he did a great, great job laying it out. I'm not disputing any of that. What I'm saying is, I am saying that the vote was already taken, we changed protocol. So maybe what we do is let's never do this again.
We're going to move forward.
Let's never, so let's maybe decide never to do this again.
So here's a question.
I think it was a.
Who brought it forward that we changed the protocol instead of going with the precedent that's been in the past?
Right here in the board briefs.
So.
I can read the board briefs again. I can read the whole paragraph of the board briefs. I only read one sentence of it. That's when the changes came. And those decisions were made by Andy and Larry to put this up.
So we'll go back to this. You have boards around the state of Michigan who do take a vote as a first reading and a vote as a second reading. And they, sometimes they may vote up, they may vote down. I don't know how they go, but they vote on both. So that way it shows that they've taken a, a new policy and a change of a policy twice. If our board would have had a clear line like we had on one of those policies, there would have been no options. But because we couldn't come to any kind of an agreement of any sort in a workshop, that was our resolution, so we can move forward on these policies.
I'm not sure that's a correct interpretation.
Larry, we worked for six months on one policy.
It was a seven oh vote, I would say.
I worked on it for 20 years.
Well, maybe you should change your policy then.
But it was a seven oh vote, Andy, there was an agreement. It was seven to nothing agreement on that policy.
All said and done.
It was a seven oh on that, that said, this is the policy we're moving forward.
Yes.
That was the vote, correct.
Hundred percent, yes.
There you go, you answered your own question. There you go. You answered your own question.
I didn't ask a question.
That's the policy that moved forward.
Right. But it was a 7-0 vote when you said we couldn't come to...
To move that one forward.
Okay. When you said we couldn't come to a resolution, we did come to a resolution. All seven of us voted to put that policy forward. So that's a true statement. But that's a true statement. In the past, we never voted twice. And so there was no...
We always had the second reading.
Because...
Then why don't we have the second reading?
We had this whole discussion. That's why you don't vote on the first. That's why you don't vote on the first.
We actually didn't. We voted which policy we were moving forward out of two.
But it was a vote.
The Board of Education and the policy that did not have two options, it could have... Policies always can be voted down. So you go through the first reading, you take no action, come to the second. As a board, you can still vote that policy down. That's the power of your vote.
But we've never done that in the past. It's not protocol. It's never been done.
It's a common practice.
But not for us. But not for us. Right.
Can I go back to, we had to solve a problem on how to get a policy in front of you.
So can I ask Jeremy a question?
I don't know. Is it going to be a question or is it legal advice?
I didn't ask legal advice ever.
I wanted to make sure.
I'm asking policy interpretation is what he came, and he came and said, we do have a policy, purchasing policy, right?
He did.
And so in the essence, to move forward, whether we agree or not, this is where we're at. Which policy is it?
The policy that was adopted by the board on June 25th, 2019, was adopted, was recorded in your minutes, and it's never been amended or overruled and repealed since then.
So the vote that was done on the 24th that was a 5-2 repeal, didn't actually...
There was no motion to repeal.
What was the motion?
The motion was to adopt the revisions presented, as presented.
Right. So they didn't, so we could revert back to 2019?
So no change was made.
Okay.
So you had a policy. It was adopted for five years. There was a proposed revision. The revisions failed, so the policy that's been there for five years is still there.
Okay. So as parliamentarian, in the future, I'm going to highly recommend we go back to the way we used to do it, and that's going to be my suggestion. So lesson learned. Thank you, Jeremy.
Glad to help.
Any other clarification? Anything else?
I just don't agree, but that's fine. There's no problem.
We don't have to agree at this point.
All right. Now we're moving to the financial audit. Mrs. Shaw.
Thank you, President Zimmerman. Tonight, we are asking the board to move to accept the 2023-2024 financial audit as prepared by the firm of Calkins, Hale, and Rafco of Monroe, Michigan.
I would move to accept the financial audit as presented.
There's support?
Second.
Any discussion?
Is that on our website, Alcasi, or is that...
I can't post it until the board approves it.
Okay, so it would be posted?
Once I receive it from Mrs. Rafco, I will post it. And I will also provide that to you in a PDF as you requested.
Does she have any hard copies left?
I can ask her. I haven't reached out yet.
Okay. I appreciate it.
Well, yeah. Don't you have the one from the meeting?
I didn't keep it.
What's the discussion? What's the discussion?
I put it in my folder.
He's looking for a hard copy.
I didn't have my audit. I put it in my folder and it got disclosed. Sorry.
We have roll call, please, Jamie.
That's like a mortal sin, by the way.
It is. It is. I'm worried about you. Roll call.
Yes.
Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Van Wassenova?
Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. Next, we will move on to old business, and I will turn it back over to Mr. Shaw for the Waterloo Elementary entry-related...
Thank you, President Zimmerman. Tonight, we are also asking the board to move to award the following base bids. $108,900 from Crispin Contractors for bid category 002A. $1,039,000 from the Speaker Company for bid category 006A. $344,600 from Adrian Mechanical Services for bid category 023B. $8,200 from FISECX for bid category 023E. $267,540 from Stalegrave Turner Electric for bid category 02A. $88,412 for general conditions for Clark Construction. And $176,824 for construction contingencies. The total bid package number six approval is not to exceed $2,33476 and will be funded from the 2020-2023 Bond Capital Projects Fund.
Is there a motion?
I'm going to approve the bid package number six, not to exceed $2,33476 for Waterloo from the funded 2020-2023 Bond Capital Projects.
Is there support?
Support.
Support.
Is there any small discussion? Because I feel this thing's been discussed, so my head's going to fall off.
Number one, just for the public, this Waterloo, okay? So it's Waterloo. Number two, since this is construction and it follows the state statute, regardless of how we feel about whether or not we have purchase policy, the state has one net day mandate for us. So this is appropriate regardless of the situation, so that's all I have to say.
Okay.
Do you want me to say something?
Do you got anything you want to say?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Jamie, could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Hatt?
Yes.
Mrs. Myers?
Yes.
Mr. Van Wassenova?
Yes.
Mrs. Williams? Yes.
Yes, and the motion passes. That takes us to superintendent comments, so I'll turn it back over to you, Superintendent Shaw.
All right. Well, thank you, sir. Board elections are November 5th, coming up right here. And so we have on our website profiles for everybody, and that was posted on October 3rd. The link to the candidate profile is also shared on our Saturday Weekend Review newsletter and on Monday in our Facebook. So if people want to see who's those members running, can just go to our website and see that there. National School Lunch Week is October 14th through the 18th, and all students at Monroe Public Schools are eligible for free breakfast and lunch on school days. We would like to extend the thanks to our food service partners of Sedexo for their work preparing and distributing meals to thousands of MPS students every day. We're already approaching that season of a half-day is coming up on Wednesday, October 16th. Professional development in the morning and parent-teacher conferences in the afternoon in the elementary schools. And then Monday, the 21st, is fall break. No school for students. So hopefully, to all you students out there, that that is a beautiful day of six inches of snow, not sunny in '70. So we'll put that out there.
What?
Yeah. Hey, all about planting some negative seeds if we have to. Kids all love snow in October, so...
How about a hurricane?
I'm done.
All right, you're done. Public commentary, I'll turn it over to you, Darla.
Hi. I'm just going to give you a heads up. It's a three-minute public commentary. You can come up to the podium. I will begin your three minutes. When you start speaking, I have signs I'll hold up that'll say 1 minute, 30 seconds, and whatnot to keep you on time. If you have any questions, feel free to ask me when you come up. So the first one up is Yvonne. You ready to go? And just so you know, we don't typically respond at this time. We usually take your questions and go on. There's been some circumstances where a quick, easy answer suffices, so...
Okay. At the last meeting I attended, and I have missed a couple, you were kind of up in the air about approving the spending on the upgrades at Waterloo. So obviously, you have had a workshop or discussed that and have approved it tonight. Trying to read my notes here. I noticed at last night's workshop, somebody posted something, and probably it was on Facebook that I saw today. And I had checked the agenda, and it talked about Waterloo, and I assumed it was just on the spending part of the program there. You had a chart about possible redistricting and reconfiguring grade levels in different buildings. And if I had known that was on the topic of discussion, I may have showed up last night. I guess, let's see. So are we considering redistricting, moving grade levels around among the different buildings? I assume we're still looking at, with all the money we're spending on Waterloo, that's obviously going to be a used building. And I think when you were questioning the spending on this project, someone asked about student enrollment and numbers since we were able to shift the kids out of Waterloo during the construction year. Did we have enough enrollment to justify this expense there, the $2 million? And then I'm thinking, it looks like, are we planning to add a lot of preschool classes in various buildings? And I guess my concern is, are we concentrating on academics for K-12? Or are we looking to be the number-one provider of childcare and preschool in the Monroe area? And how would that affect any private preschools? I know the YMCA does one, a church that I know of, and I don't know what else. But I don't know if my question is clear, but that's my basic concern. Are we going heavy into preschool? Or are we going to concentrate on bringing up our academic level in our K-12? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Yvonne.
Okay, next is Tina Sorg. Did I say that right?
Yes, you did.
Oh, good. So I'll go ahead and start the three minutes when you're ready.
Okay, so I am Tina Sorg. For those that don't know me, I've been with the district. This is my 26th year. I've been with Arborwood School since it was concepted 16 years ago. I'm going to piggyback off what was just said, and the meeting for last night, which I believe Mr. Shaw said earlier, was to discuss the bond spending on Waterloo. And yet, restructuring came up in the discussion, which was not on the agenda. I feel that, once again, that's a disservice to Arborwood, Arborwood teachers, Arborwood staff, Arborwood families, and most of our Arborwood kids. Arborwood kids are constantly being put last on the list, and it doesn't matter what anyone up there says. They are not taken seriously. Our parents have a hard enough time going five blocks to our school for meetings, their children's school functions, conferences coming up on the 16th. And yet, you are going to send them further away. Closest one would be Mason. That's across town for our families. That's across town for these parents. It is not acceptable. I am speaking for my staff who back me, who are sitting back there, who have come to these meetings. It is just not acceptable that we continue to displace these kids, these families. These kids, we all know, are at the lowest economic society around here. We know that they don't have funds. We know that they don't have education beyond high school. Very few. And yet, we're going to continue to disrupt their education. The family that we have built over 16 years. I am one of few teachers that have been there the whole 16 years. I think there's five of us now. Five. There's a reason people stay, and there's a reason people leave. For those of us that stay, we are fighting for our kids. We are fighting for the best education for them. We are fighting for the family we have built. And you guys see numbers. You move them on your little board. This teacher's, this name's going here, this going to this building. I have moved eight times in the last 15 years. Eight. I have given hundreds of hours of free time to Monroe Public School packing and unpacking, which is fine. I won't do it again. It's ridiculous. It's moving a small apartment. Anybody that's been in a lower elementary school, we make the best we can for our children, and yet, you keep ripping it apart, and it's not fair. And please, think about the families.
Thank you. That's all.
Okay. That moves us to board member comments. Are there any board members that would like to make a comment tonight?
Yes, I would.
Help yourself.
Our band, marching band, had their MSBOA festival last night at Flat Rock, and they did great. They had two, so across the board, so an excellent rating overall. They also participated in an iTunes Invitational over the weekend, which was fabulous to see all the bands perform and great music, great performances. We have another football game Friday night, so if you haven't seen our football players, cheerleaders, band play halftime, come out and see them, but don't drink too much water during the day. And then there's Gork Inviter, or Gork Meet on Saturday at Munson Park for cross-country. There'll be kids from all over the place running around, so please be safe if you're out in that area and watch out for all those parents that are parking cars in the lots and all that good stuff. But come out and support your kids.
Tom, you got anything?
Can I talk about something that's specifically Monroe Public Schools?
You can talk about whatever you want to talk about, Tom.
I just want everyone to be aware, my wife, along with one of our friends, is going to be driving a truck down to Asheville on Thursday. They're accepting donations up through late tomorrow. You can donate items at Menno Chrysler Dodge, Verna's Bar out in the beach area, and Go Mad Fitness Center. They've already got a U-Haul truck full, plus another pickup truck, but...
Tom, may I ask, what kind of donations do they need?
Oh, it's basically everything.
Okay.
Toilet paper, water, you know, disposable diapers, personal hygiene items.
Thermal blankets is a big one.
Yeah, blankets. They need everything. So...
Okay.
Please, if you can, donate a few things, and we'll be sending them down on Thursday.
I think there's also a truck at Duck Steel Grace.
Yeah, there's another truck there, too.
Okay. That's it?
Yep.
Just a couple of follow-ups. I know we talked last meeting about the First Vehicle Service contract. We indicated that we might even cancel that in October. I don't know if we have the countywide consortium put together yet or how that's coming.
We will get back to you on that.
Hopefully, before next July.
Hopefully, before next July.
The second item is that we also have a consulting agent in regards to our goal-setting, and I know we're paying them a little over $100,000 a year. Can you get back to me on what's going on there, too? Since we already got three months of that, 12 months?
The process is already, is moving forward. We have another meeting tomorrow, and so surveys are, our first survey. And the next steps will be further work with our leadership groups, and so you're going to be actively involved here with that process very soon.
Great. Then the last thing, I thank you for the information regards to Clark's trailer. Is that now being taken off the high school?
We're going to talk to Dave Warner. That should be happening very soon. I'm not sure what day he's pulling it, but he knows it's going.
So did we tell him we're going to stop paying him?
Yeah, he knows.
Okay.
Yeah, he knows that. We don't need anymore. We're going to give them a space and a building for their people.
Okay. All right. Thank you. You have to spend money for nothing.
Absolutely. I can tell you, looking out into the crowd, there's never been a discussion between myself, Mr. Shaw, about closing Waterloo, ever. There's never been a discussion, if this board doesn't make any decisions, there'll be no district shift of K-6 schools at all. So there's nothing that's been carved in stone. There's nothing going on in the background. It would absolutely be brought forward and to the public before any decision like that would be brought back to the board. So don't think we're trying to run something in the background because that's just not so. Darla?
Thank you for that. In my little research in the meeting minutes, I saw that, I couldn't find Board Meeting Number Nine. So I kind of went through a couple of times. I closed it and opened it, but I could not find Number Nine. And so I'm just making note of that. The other thing is, I know people that are very happy that they got their card today. And it's not a report card. It's not an ID card. It is a Chick-fil-A card for count day. So a lot of excited people out there today, so thank you for that.
Go ahead.
Well, I just want to say that Board Meeting Number Nine was canceled. However, because of when you guys make the calendar, we assign numbers each evening. It's not going to show the meeting minutes for Number Nine because that would...
Maybe we should put in there that it was canceled so that people don't go looking for it. Is there a way to do that? Just indicate in there that it was canceled? Because it looks like we're missing a big portion, just to go...
Yeah, we don't want to have any 18-minute gaps or nothing.
Right. We don't want people to come back in '20, '30 and say, you didn't have a meeting Number Nine.
No, remember. Oh, you're right. I'm 18-minute.
Anything else?
No.
Can we get a motion for adjournment?
Second. Support.
Shove hands. This meeting is adjourned.
Oh, my. I'm about ready to rip my hair out.